It's 6:30 PM, so we're gonna go ahead and get the city council meeting for Tuesday, March 15th started, and I would like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Ms. Nyla, on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prozabulinski. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jaggers.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And I did speak to Councilman Paul Prozabulinski, and he would be absent at this meeting. And before we get to the approval of minutes, I would like to welcome Attorney Brax, who will be here with us, who works for the Harris Law Firm, so thank you for being here this evening. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for our regular hybrid Zoom meeting for March 1st, 2022.
I'll still approve. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, and a second from Councilman Don Prozabulinski. Ms. Nyla, any questions or any corrections?
I'm just gonna make it a public record that I did not get a copy of them, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
All right, and we will try to work with IT to make sure that your email is corrected. Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jaggers.
Abstain, please.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and one abstained.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Are there any reports of standing committees? Councilman Don Prozabulinski.
Thank you, President. Yeah, on behalf of the Labor Relations Committee, and being the chairman of the Labor Relations Committee, and Mr. Councilman Dabney, also as a member, Councilman Paul Prozabulinski absent tonight, he's a member also, that I want to say that I'm very proud and honored to state that the Labor Relations Committee has formally, or tentatively, got into a contract with the FOP from the Michigan City Police Department, of a new three-year contract. As far as I know, the vote was 71 in favor and four against. This contract, in both our words and with the negotiating team from the FOP, is very competitive with all other police departments in the area, and the resolution and the salary ordinance that has to be signed and approved by the council will be coming down at the next council meeting. So, both our firefighters and our police officers in Michigan City, Indiana, have new three-year contracts that are very competitive with the other departments in the area, and all the funding is coming out of the general fund. No Riverboat money at all was used to negotiate these contracts. I also want to thank City Controller Yvonne Hofmester for her hard work and effort with the team, also City Attorney Amber LaPage, of course, and City Personnel Director Andrea Smith for their hard work and effort on doing this. And just want to say that the negotiating team, both from the FOP and from the firefighters' local, were very professional. Every meeting was very informative, and everyone got along just fine, you know, on a professional basis, which I expected, nothing less from our city employees and from the committee that we had from the city council members. So with that being said, that's all I have to say on that regards, except that, like I said, the resolution and the salary ordinance will be coming at our next council meeting for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports of standing committees? Yes, sir. Report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Michigan City City Finance Committee, a meeting was held on March 15th, 2022, today, and in our review claims and funds number 2042, Riverboat for $75, that invoice was for Freeman and Associates. That was the only claims that we had for the March 1st, 2022 claims docket. Also, we discussed in our prior meeting from February 25th, the request, or what we were asked by Chief Legault, what was the process or the procedure for salary increase for his chief deputy, and I just want, for the record, to state that I have been in communications with the city attorney Amber LaPage, the Controller Hofmester, and received correspondence from the mayor, and based on the fire contract negotiations, which was after the city salary budgets was approved, left this particular position salary lower than what the current positions of other employees in that department, and that is actually the only one within the city where that salary is less than the other employees within that department. And so I would like for the administration to make a recommendation in regards to increasing that salary. That's all that I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Claims docket for March 1st, 2022, we only have one item on the docket, which was, was that recommended for approval, the claim that in your Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fund 2042 Riverboat Claim for $75, I will entertain a motion.
I'll still approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prozabulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jaggers.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and I want to post.
Thank you. Are there any reports of any special or select committees? Hearing none. For tonight, I know that we have Executive Director Clarence Hulse here to present his annual report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. Great to be here today to talk about some of the plans that came into fruition last year, but also what are some of the plans for this year, 2022. Thank you for your support, contributions, and always making sure, you know, we can work together to bring some great projects to our community. So, tonight, I will show you a couple slides, and you've got a lot of business to attend to, and then I'll open up for Q and A, and then go from there. So, what you're seeing tonight is a lot of partnerships. I always tell people, we don't do anything by ourselves. We talk, we work with the business community, of course, the city council, the mayor administration, and the business community, and a lot of nonprofits. So, we are always involved, working with many people to make things happen. As we can tell by our report this year, potential, but during the time, I think it's business of its time. With all the plan that has been done before my time, in the last 10 years, the last five years, and the last year, I think things are finally coming to fruition for Michigan City. And so, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. Our forums have been ringing out the last six months with people coming to the city, getting tours about what's happening and how they can be involved. So, a very exciting time for our community, and so we've got to start thinking ahead about how we make adjustments for these changes, and how do we make, ensure everybody has a seat at the table. We're still following our mantra, economic prosperity for all. I think I said this last year. Not everybody wants a job. Some people, they want to create their own jobs, start their own companies. So, we're trying to be helpful to small businesses, entrepreneurs who may want to do that, because not everybody wants to be a worker per se, they want to be their own person, and so we encourage that, because we believe there's a DNA in this city for that type of environment. A lot of our large companies actually were started here. Southern Polytech, Solair, Horizon, Becker, they all started here. So, they became big corporations, but they all started as a mom and pop, so keep that in mind. Again, we follow our mantras, or we find, we follow economic inclusion, workforce development, attraction, that's big right now for us. Companies that have a lot of want ads out there, place making, working closely with the city to make sure we ensure our corridors are looking great, or parks are looking great. Those are all things that make people want to come to community and live and work and play. Storytelling, we always try to market what's happening in business, make sure we tell our story, because they're all saying, if you don't tell it, somebody else will, and not what you want to hear. So, we're always trying to make sure we have a place that's able to tell our story. And last but not least, economic modernization. We try to ensure our companies are investing in themselves, whether that's equipment or upskilling, because if you don't grow or don't improve, you won't be around. So, we try, we find ways to do that. We bring in resources from the state, different organizations, to our manufacturers, small business, because we want to make sure they stay alive. Last year, we responded to 103 RFI's, and in a nutshell, people call us all the time looking for properties, land building, we have to respond. Sometimes they go nowhere, but if you don't respond, you're not in the game. So, we have to respond when we get these calls, and people want a big package of data. We respond to those. We track what the most requested are. Look, the buildings are getting larger. I think I came to you a few years ago, about 75,000 square feet, now they're roughly 200,000 square feet, in 26 sort of ceiling heights, a large acreage, which is becoming a problem for Michigan City, and we need to have much more large acreage in the city for these large projects. Some of the investments last year, I won't read them line by line, because you have them in your package, but of course, the townhomes on Blaine Street, TRG, the apartment complex, Agartha Mansion, the Plaza Facility, medical office, and of course, Kia Hyundai. That's, this $3 million is for, is a force phase one. Because they're moving from their original location by franchise, or the franchise regulation, you have to have two locations. They can't move from one to one, you go from one to two. So, we're helping them find a space right now to put their other location, which will be a grand new building on Highway 20. So, we're still looking for that right now at good speed. Shady Creek Winery, they have a big run open plan for April. It's looking wonderful, if you have not been out there. They're doing total remodeling and expansion, and of course, you're all, we're running brewing, we announced last November, being on Highway 12. Again, those are some pictures of what these look like that have been completed, not announced. The Shady Creek, around the ring, burning brewing. And of course, one that was completed late last year was the pace at the Water Francisco site, $20 million renovation, or they're building us there, and over 60 new jobs in the medical profession. So, we're excited about that. Some of the things we did last year, which we do every year, is just the annual community job fair. We do the commercial brokerage meetings, work with the food industry study that's still underway, coworking space, we're trying to find space to bring entrepreneurs downtown. So, some of the work we're working on right now as we speak, to apply for funds for that from the federal government, and so we're moving forward with that right now. Some of the other investments that have opened up since the pandemic, I know that they kind of went under the radar, but we've had some huge projects that opened up in this city. Barrel House, GAF Materials, that's a $35 million project, 200,000 square feet, the Solair, they built an 80,000 square facility. Of course, part of the double-track excitement is we're seeing a lot of multifamily in the downtown. And on your right has the pipeline. Lakeside is on the way, Wild Bash, small project, but small businessman here in town wants to do some apartments, so we're helping that with that. TRG, that's the office apartment, yeah, those announced this morning, and of course, the train station. So, again, the pipelines roughly about roughly 1,400 multifamily units in the downtown within half mile of the train station. So, Crystal Mall projection, looking at probably 2,000 people in the next five to six years if they don't all come to fruition. So, downtown will change. We'll also work with the city controller to look for funding for the east part of the city, Highway 20, we're applied for an EDA grant, so fingers are crossed for that to happen. We need to have water and sewer lines out on Highway 20, the area annexed last year. As part of the, 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 this we had to do for the federal government to get this train station, we had to show why we wanted to have something different, because if you look at the original plans, was, that's the, the, the apartments, but you look at the city, there's a lot going on across the whole downtown. So, again, rendering of the apartment project, that's hoping to break ground this September. That was announced this morning, the hotel condo project, and they are rapidly moving to get that started. Double-track, that's one of the main reasons for investment in Michigan City. It has pros and cons, I tell everybody, but one of the good things is bringing more people to work in the city, and it would bring more investments. Going back to the train station, this is what we originally promised, the lobby and garage, and I think we had to go back and negotiate to get something different. We were looking to something more like this, when we started talking to the feds about what can happen at the site, more of a mixed-use project. We were considering maybe $40 million in a small apartment complex, 150 or so, but, you know, we end up with this, which is great, 200 apartments, some retail office space, and a real nice project for our downtown. So, that will change our Midtown, and it will definitely connect up to the Midtown, because when this was announced, people started buying our properties within a walk-in distance. So, again, properties are rapidly changing in Michigan City as we speak, so lots of future investments. In terms of what's going on this year, we are navigating the post-pandemic recovery. We have a seminar next week with restaurants about what are some of the best practices out there, because we want to make the restaurants stay alive. And of course, we completed the housing study last year, so we are now looking at all the properties that are available for residential development in the city. Single-family, townhomes, not just downtown, we're trying to look across the whole city to make sure we have development. Looking at workforce housing, affordable housing, single-family, that's where we work with, the CDC to get that done. Partnerships, job fairs, the job market is very, very tight, so we're doing our best to help local companies to find people, and that means marketing and targeting people from outside the marketplace. Infrastructure, again, I mentioned we work with the city controller to apply for funds for EDA grant for water and sewer. Again, just trying to make sure we have capacity and capability when we get companies that want to move here. Entrepreneurship, trying to make sure we, we help small business, people who want to start business. That's the bread and butter here in Michigan City. And of course, you know, working with neighborhoods, childcare, another big issue, people can't go to work unless they have childcare. There are 600 spaces that are needed to be filled in Michigan City, 200 in the whole county. So, there's a huge need for childcare in the whole, in the whole community. So, we've applied for a grant to help do an assessment of how we, how we help resolve that, working with the local ones that are here already, to improve the capacity, help them expand, but also look at possibility of the future, trying to get some new companies to do that here. If you feel that if there's more competition, it will help with the prices. And also work with local corporations to buy spaces over time for the employees, so you drive the cost down for everybody. So, priority needs, that's my wish list, but there's a huge list in your packet. Industrial billings, you know, one of the downside right now of being so, having people coming here is that we're going to have one empty billing right now, like I can think of, that's not on the contract, and that's the federal mobile bill. But all the other large billings are pretty much on the contract, are gone. So, we need to find some new billings here quickly to bring more projects to Michigan City. Utilities on Highway 20, we need to get that done within the next 12 months, so we get to get more projects. We need to come up with a plan for annexation. We need to figure out how to manage our edges, so we don't lose companies, have competition to our local companies within Michigan City. Upskilling our people, make sure they have the skills they need to get these great jobs, and public safety. Always want to make sure we have people who are safe, and, you know, crime prevention, perception, all plays part of the economic development. So, those are my quick comments. I've got a lot of stuff in your packet, you want to look at some of those or ask questions on some of those, but I just wanted to make sure you kind of overview of what's happening, you know, anywhere shop, lots going on, and some of you have been to my office, I've given you some behind-the-scenes tour of what could happen in the city, and every day, those things change, because people come, they with one idea, one drawing, two months later, it's a totally different project, so. You know, so it's very dynamic environment right now in Michigan City, but it's a great time to be here. I tell people who are looking to start a business, drive to Chicago, go to Detroit, drive around the train stations, because whatever happens around train stations in those cities will happen here. So, if you're looking to start a business, what are those services people need around train stations? So, what they need in Chicago, New York, anywhere else, they'll deal in Michigan City. So, those are ideas to start a business, and they're, you know, the entry, the entry cost is still low, so now's a good time to look at those options. So, I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Clarence. So, I'll open it up for questions. Councilman Brian Dabney.
Just a quick explanation. Every time I see these posts, and it shows one of the new buildings coming up, somebody always looks at the comment and say, well, how is that being funded? Could you please go ahead and enlighten the public on that?
Well.
Especially the train station, they didn't talk about some of the other.
Train station, hotel condo project, majority funded by private investment. When people, when they're within the TIF, they can ask for a portion of the TIF to fund their projects. So, the commission can decide what percentage they want to do up to, off that TIF, and make, I guess I want people to understand that if there's no project, there's no TIF. So, if the project doesn't happen, there's no money given to them, so they have to create their own funding as part of, part of the project. So, let's say our project is $100 million, and they need $10 million from the city. That'll be part of the tax that they create over time, that goes back to them. So, if they created 20 million, a lot of taxes, they get 10 back, and then they find the rest of the money for their project to the private sector, equity, investment. But, but I'd say 90% of the money comes from the investor, not the city.
Okay, I just wanted to drive home the point, that it doesn't come from our general fund, and.
No, it's very specific to the project, to a part of the project.
Because I hear that all the time.
So, they create their own.
Spending the Riverboat.
On the project, so.
Thank you.
I'll spend time.
Yeah, thanks, Clarence, for the, for the update, but I do, I do have a question with the, and it deals with TIF. Okay, and I don't know if you can answer this or not.
I'll try.
I know we do have our experts here this evening, that maybe could answer that. So, with the, the train station being downtown, and I know that you already sent me a figure on the amount of property taxes that the city would be getting from that, and these other developments that would be going up. So, with the tax buddies that are coming in, and that's all TIF area, everything from 11th Street north to the lake is all TIF. All right, so with that, with those TIF tax dollars, the way I understand TIF, stays in that TIF area, right? Correct? And with any of it, with any of that money, some of it has to come into our general fund. Is that correct, or no? A certain percentage?
Yeah, that's a legal question.
Yeah, bring me that. Yeah, thanks, Randy.
State your name for the audience.
Absolutely. Randy Rampola, attorney with Barnes &amp; Thomburg with offices in South Bend. So, all of those projects that may be happening in the TIF area, the property as it exists before the development will have a base assessed value, and so, that, the taxes that are generated from the assessment on the base assessed value, that'll go to the city and all of the overlapping taxing units. It's only the increase in the, from the investment that will occur, that will be captured as TIF for, for a period of time, and that would be used to, as Clarence said, you know, repay the investor, or pay for bonds, et cetera. So, there'll be some portion of the assessed value, the way to maybe to look at it as a stack, and you have some portion of the assessed value, the base will generate taxes that will go to the overlapping taxing units, and it's only the increase in the assessed value that will be the TIF that will be captured and used for the, for payment of the investment, the city's portion of the investment.
Okay. Yeah, I, so I understand that, because I know the train station or that project that they're proposing, the $80 million project, and I believe the property taxes on that, Clarence, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you told me they were like, I don't know, 600,000?
Paper knock in the estimate, but however, you're getting the taxes from all over, all the districts into that. If that was in the general fund, you wouldn't get that much money.
Right, well, and that's what, that's the point I'm trying to make here, is that although all this big investment and big buildings are going to be going up down in the North End, the only thing that the city will be getting from it is what was there prior to this building being there, that a base evaluation, assessed evaluation of what was there before the big building went up.
Well, I think the other thing I could say too, that will be, and it's hard to predict, but to the extent these are apartments or condos, you'll have people moving into them, and then, so if they're, to the extent they're, you know, working, they're residing in the county, they'll be paying local income tax as well. So, you would see, hopefully, an increase in the local income tax, so you'll start to see some benefits from there as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Hulse? None? We let you off easy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. All right, any other city officers with reports? Seeing or hearing none? Ms. Nyla, any petitions?
The following petition was received in the clerk's office on March 9th, 2022, a petition for voluntary annexation into the city of Michigan City by Prince Family LLC, Trendis Bradford individually, and as trustee of the Trendis Bradford Revocable Living Trust dated April 17th, 2007, and higher, Wiznewski Indiana Farm LLC, collectively the petitioner.
Thank you, and there will be something later on in the agenda that we'll be discussing that, that petition. Ms. Nyla, any communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on February 24th from Controller's Office regarding procedures to submit invoices, payroll, and minutes by the board and commission. Claim notice was received in the clerk's office on the 24th from Croson Law Firm in Carmel, Indiana. Correspondence was sent to Mayor Perry from South Shore Line and forward to the council, was received in my office on the 24th regarding double-track NWI clarification of planned work. Correspondence was also received from Controller Hofmester on the 25th, clarifying with the MCPD FD Fire Department. Chief Legault was requesting at the Finance Committee meeting held on February 25th. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office that was sent to Mayor Perry and copied to the council on March 1st regarding the resignation of City Engineer Jeff Wright. Correspondence was received on March 2nd from Council President Deitch regarding AIM webinar, Governor's Virtual Meeting Post-Emergency Order 01062022, ending on March 4th, 2022. A tort claim notice was received in the clerk's office on March 9th from Ken Nun Law Office in Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Nyla, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provisions of services to certain real estate, approximately 147.2 acres situated between Paz Road, Johnson Road, and US Highway 20 in LaPorte County, Indiana, a proposed annexation area, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Any comments from sponsors? I know that we have some people here this evening, if they would like to say something representing this annexation, so now I move it to the public, any comments from the public? Attorney. And state your name and address.
Attorney Brad Adamsky, Drayton Beechy, Sirugon Elliott, 820 Jefferson, LaPorte. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Councilmembers. This has been a long work in progress throughout the beginning of this year, a lot of help with the EDC and also with the city, getting us even to this point, which is still just the beginning of this annexation process. As you read earlier, the petition is before you on behalf of the various petitioners that are seeking to have their property annexed into the city of Michigan City. This right here is the resolution adopting the fiscal plan, which should have been provided each of you, detailing the positive financial impact of this annexation on the city. Later, there will be an ordinance on first reading as well, we're set for a public meeting on that April 5th. Um, we're set for public meeting on that April 5th. So certainly we can answer any questions the council maybe have tonight. Um, we have representatives from the property purchaser as well. Um, but again, this is just the first formal step and quite a few steps we've got to go yet.
Any additional public comment? And I'll ask that you stay, stay close in case the council has any questions for you. Any additional public comment? Hearing none, any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? I'm gonna ask you to take the chair. So this area is, uh, and you may have seen it, it's out there off of Highway 20, uh, near, across from Evergreen Plaza, um, is the area. And, um, the impact that he talked about in the fiscal plan is to allow us to annex this area like we've done previously for economic development purposes. Um, so I move that we adopt, um, this resolution.
Support. It's been a motion by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Simmons. Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla.
Ms. Nyla, the next resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution supporting and seeking fund via the Infrastructure Invest and Job Act. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
My apologies, Ms. Nyla, I needed that read in its entirety.
Okay, whereas the Michigan City Common Council seeks to promote widespread infrastructure improvements and job training for Michigan City. And whereas with the announcement pending concerning new major developments in Michigan City, there is an increasing need for infrastructure improvements, job training, social work, and early childhood development to support the residents of Michigan City and the growth of community. And whereas Michigan City Common Council has identified the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Job Act, herein referred to as legislation, as an appropriate source of funding which can be made available to Michigan City, um, see Exhibit A. Whereas, um, the legislation includes 550 billion in new federal investments in American roads and bridges, water infrastructure, resilience, internet and more. Whereas the investment will repair and rebuild America's roads and bridges with a focus on climate change mitigation, resilience, equality and safety of users, including cyclists and pedestrians. And whereas the legislation includes a total of 159,000 dollars if direct fund of Michigan City Municipal Airport to fiscal year 2022. Whereas the legislation includes a total of 40 billion of new funding for bridge repair, replacement and rehabilitation. And whereas the Michigan City Common Council desires to work cooperatively with La Porte County Government with respect to identifying and prioritizing bridges within Michigan City that are in need of repair and replacement. And whereas in addition to the federal funds available through legislation, the Michigan City Common Council is committed to working with the city administration to maximize the city's access to other available funding, including but not limited to funding available through the Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the Michigan, by Michigan City, Indiana Common Council as follows. The affirmation whereas sections are incorporated herein, herein if fully set forth herein. Number two, the Common Council strongly supports every effort to seek and obtain funding via the Infrastructure Investment and Job Act, and hereby directs the city clerk to forward of this resolution to Congressman Frank Moran, State Senator Mike Bohachek, State Senator Rodney Paul, and State Representative Pat Boyd for the purpose of enlisting their assistance in this endeavor. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by the Michigan City Common Council on approval by the mayor and introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. And I also make a motion.
I had a comment.
And, okay, and I have a comment too. Um, Councilman, uh, Bryant Dabney?
Um, in regards to, uh, this money, yeah, infrastructure investment. Um, actually you had a chance to talk to, uh, Representative Frank Murvan this weekend. And we were talking about the ask, how that has to come from the different municipalities and that. Uh, for this money, I think he was able to secure 45 million or so, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, he told me that the mayor would, would, or chief executive officer would have to be the, the person that would, uh, make the ask. So it's gonna be great that we all support this, but he, he made it quite clear to me that eventually it's gonna have to be our mayor, so we got work to do, um, in order to move this on. So, um, I, I love the, the, uh, resolution that we're gonna do it, but we need to get together and, and get the mayor to get in on the ask for this, these funds.
Yeah, and just to, to answer that, um, so I've met with him three times now and, and this was an opportunity for us to, um, get all the signatures, including the mayor. And this was an opportunity to get the door open and the, the conversation started. Um, because that was one of the things, and he thought this would be a great idea to bring the resolution forward to get it moving. Uh, so that's how this kind of, uh, uh, came about, um, as far as the, um, actual resolution. Any comments from any, um, other council members? Councilman Don?
No, I, I made a motion.
Oh, so, okay, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on the floor, uh, from Councilman Don Privilinski.
Support.
And a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Matt?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Next resolution by title on, by time, well, I, I would ask the sponsor if he would like it read in its entirety or if by title only, is that okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, so by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution supporting the La Porte County Common Council establishing a public safety local income tax. And this is introduced, introduced by Mr. Matt.
Okay, and, uh.
Comments from the sponsor?
All righty, uh, I'll, I'll just make this short. Uh, we've been, uh, going over this for some time now. Uh, we've had two, uh, listening sessions to inform the public. Uh, the short name for this is the, just for public consumption here at this meeting, the short name for this is the lit tax, tax, the, uh, local, uh, income tax, local county income tax. And, uh, this vote is extremely important, uh, for us in a step in solidifying our police and fire and EMS, uh, for a substantial time in the future. Um, it's a very, very modest increase, uh, to our county income tax, uh, that still leaves us well behind the majority of, uh, counties in their taxations. Uh, it just is ironic to me to hear how, how perfectly this flows with, uh, Mr. Hulse's presentation of the needs that are coming to our city. You know, 2,000 units of housing, uh, within a very, very short time. Uh, the, the retail and all the other things that are actually coming. Uh, it would be such a, uh, a great thing for us to roll on this and solidify our police, fire and EMS situations before we're behind the curve on things like this. So, um, it would be an enormous, uh, positive move by us. And I'm, um, definitely in support and I'm hoping we get the entire support of our county and the, and the county council who is actually going to be the, uh, deciders on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
Doug Legault, Michigan City Fire Department Chief. Uh, I would just like to state that we appreciate you spending the extra time and effort looking into this issue, getting all the facts that you can make the best decision that you believe is, is necessary. So thank you for the extra time and effort. And if I could really quick with your permission, I missed my opportunity earlier. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Tracy Tillman for looking into that issue for me. Uh, very well appreciated, thank you so much. And the timely manner was awesome. You said you'd look into it quickly and you did. And I'd like to thank the mayor for his support and the assistance of Yvonne Hap, master and the attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? All right, comments from the council?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to, uh, offer an amendment to this resolution. Um, it was already sent into the clerk's office.
Can, can you read, uh?
Yeah, the amendment, uh, this would be after the, now therefore be resolved by the Michigan City, Indiana Common Council as follows. This is, uh, number four, uh, added to the three already existing. I agree, the common council will request an annual comprehensive public health and safety fiscal plan from the Michigan City Administration on programs and initiatives that will utilize this funding prior to any allocations.
Can we have a motion for an amendment? Do we have?
Support.
And we have a second by Councilwoman, uh, Tracy Tillman. Um, are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I just did want to add that this, um, this amendment was actually brought forth by Councilwoman Deitch, so.
Thank you. Any coun, any comments from the council?
Motion to approve?
This is for the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. We already had a motion and second, so Ms. Nyla, on the vote for the amendment to add the additional language to the, um, lit tax resolution.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, so now we have the amended, um, version of the lit tax. Um, any, um, comments from the public? I'm gonna go straight to the public if you don't mind, Mr. Matt. Any additional comments? All right, any additional comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, just, uh, wanted everybody to know, we did have public hearings that were called by, uh, our council president, uh, to get some of the input from the, the public. Uh, didn't have a lot of turnout at the one that I attended, the, the evening session. Uh, but I made perfectly clear that I'm in favor of, uh, supporting this uh, because of the funds that it could bring in and the things that we can do with this additional money. Um, I gave a long spiel talking about, uh, now this could actually provide relief to the general fund. Um, and we can actually use this money to increase the number of officers that we have, um, and things of that sort, because right now our police department is running short um, of actual officers. And hopefully this money will be used, be able to bring on more officers as well as we can look at raising pain or other things that we can do as well. But I feel that it's very important for us to have this additional funding come into the city. Um, just about every city is starving for revenue, uh, due to some property tax caps and money that we lose in what's called our circuit breaker. It goes back, uh, you know, to the state, so we lose, I think it's about $9 million right now on, uh, tax dollars that we don't have coming into the city. Um, so this is actually a way to try to get around some of that, that hurt that was put on us, uh, by the state government to actually be able to get some revenue in here. So we can expand, so we can support, um, public safety, uh, here in La Porte County. So looking forward to voting for this. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Jergis?
Yes, I'd like to add to that as well, that this is gonna give us an ability to attract, train, attract and keep good quality officers and pay them a good rate, uh, also fire. So I'm very much in favor.
Councilman Don Privilinski?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I have a few points that I want to bring up, uh, on this. And I've given this bill, not a bill, but a resolution, a lot of thought over the last month, day in and day out, I've thought about this. And what effect it'll have on people? What effect it'll have on me? What effect it'll have on retired people that collect just more than social security, that collect pensions and annuities and stocks and own income property? They'll all be paying taxes on, on that amount of money coming in. I know the only thing we heard of was social security, but there's more to it than that. And as Councilman Dabney alluded to, and I talked about it at the last two workshops that we had for the public to come, when the public and when the council could express their opinions, is that to me, this whole issue, it didn't start in La Porte County. It didn't start in Michigan City. It all started in Indianapolis. And it all started with this property tax caps when the governor said, you know, on whatever the percentage was, you know, that's all we're gonna charge. That's what the cities will get, that's what they can keep. Everything over that cap goes back to Indianapolis, back to the government, uh, funding. So, okay, that's fine. We send back $8 million a year of our property taxes back to Indianapolis. As far as I know, this was enacted back in 2010. And I was told at one of our meetings that 70% of the people in the state of Indiana voted for this and apparently 30% were against it. Well, apparently the voters weren't told what the end result of this was gonna be years down the line, because when you cut property taxes, when you cut business taxes, those are taxes that go into the community to support police, to support fire, to support city employees, to take care of your refuse workers, to take care of animal control officers, to take care of blacktopping sidewalks, what have you in your communities. Well, if they take the money away from you, but you still want to have the quality of life that you have in the community? I guess what Indianapolis is telling La Porte County and the other 72 counties in the state of Indiana that have invoked this tax is you guys do the dirty work. You guys do our responsibility up there in the cities instead of what we should be doing down here at the state level. And they're not doing it. They're not doing it. The Republican governors, the Republican majority state house and Republican state senate is not do it, not doing it. Even to this day, Governor Holcomb is still looking at tax cuts. I have a newspaper article right here that I brought where he was looking at two tax cuts for businesses so that he could be the number one lowest taxing state in the union for businesses. Well, that's great, that's great. But here we are tonight, taking a vote to give the county council the authority to raise our taxes. So that's where I think the problem lies here. And hopefully the mayors, with their Republican connections downstate and to the representatives in the area and to the state senators, will talk to these folks and tell them, you're hurting our communities. You're hurting our communities by not supplying us with the financing we need for the firemen, for the policemen in La Porte, for the EMS workers that drive the ambulances. You know, everybody is essential and I understand that perfectly. But I just wanted to get that point across. So here we are this evening, we're gonna vote on this resolution. And what I'm looking for here in this task and in this resolution is I'm looking at the future of Michigan City. And I can sit here and say, I don't want to raise anybody's taxes, I don't want to raise my taxes, of course. But I have to look at the big picture and what it is about Michigan City. And I care about the county and I care about La Porte. But my responsibility is here to Michigan City. To the public safety of the citizens that live in Michigan City. To the public safety, to the gentlemen from the Fire Department, Police Department. To the public safety, to the gentlemen from the fire department, police department, EMS, EMA and all the other emergency services. We have to provide those services, but not only so much for the different departments, but also for programs like myself and Councilwoman Deitch have talked about. This goes, this goes beyond just making sure we have pay and make benefits. I understand all that. We just got done negotiating two contracts that took six months to get done. So I understand about negotiating. I'm talking about programs that need to be implemented into the city to cut down on crime, to cut down on gun violence. You know, the state house, they just, in the state senate, just approved a gun bill now that you don't even have to have a permit if you are eighteen years or older. What effect that's gonna have on the community, I don't know. But I surely, I certainly pray for every citizen that walks the streets of Michigan City that that bill will not sneak up on them and hurt them or their family. So it's things like that. You know, I want to be proactive. I want to make sure that things are being taken care of in the city, making sure there's enough money, you know, for for public safety so that I can walk up and down the streets, anybody can walk up and down the streets and feel safe. And I know everyone here understands exactly what I'm saying. Uh, so I will be supporting this lit tax. I don't, like I said, I don't want to pay taxes anymore than anybody else. But for the future of Michigan City, for the future of the departments, for the future of the city, for the safety of the community and its citizens, that's what I have to do tonight is to support this. So when I put my head down on the on the pillow tonight, I can think that I did the best thing that I I had to do for the citizens in Michigan City. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? I don't see anybody.
I just have a very brief, Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, and that is, I do um concurb with Councilman Don, Chris Volinsky, but it's hard for me to make this decision for my constituents in the fifth board and for everyone else in the community and within Michigan City. Safety is definitely an issue throughout all of our wars throughout the city and it is much needed and it just seems like there should be another way that they could be funded um in order to implement, to give them the um funds that they need to implement these programs and increase salaries and to hire um additional firemen and police officers and such. But it's also bothersome to know that what we as a whole in the United States are dealing with with, I would say, uh economic war. So with the cost of gas, with the cost of the increase in food, and now we're getting ready to tax the public? Who are we on behalf of, from the county council to say uh to say that this is what needs to be moving forward, not knowing what someone else's source of income is, which they're already below a subsistence level for a majority of our Michigan City residents and now we're gonna tax those with what income that they do have coming in? And it it's really hard for me to make a decision at this point in regards to this resolution.
Thank you. Any um additional comments? Hearing none?
I have one.
Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, uh as I stated at the uh the workshop we had, this this mm matter will be decided by the council, whether we resolve to support it or not, by the county councils. Uh, whether we we resolve to support it or not, they're gonna make the decision. Um, they propose point two five, point five. Uh, but they could say more than that and then, you know, we're on the hook for supporting this and giving them the nod or to go ahead to implement these new taxes. And uh I I just don't think that with it out, with it with it not being our final decision or knowing exactly what the intentions of the county council is, I I cannot be in support of this at this time, so.
Any additional comments? You guys gonna let it fall on, is anybody on it make a motion or will it just fall on the floor?
I move to support.
All right, we have a a motion by Councilwoman Dahlia Jacobs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman uh Michael Mack. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Nap, Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don, President Volinsky?
Aye.
We have seven in, oh, Tracy.
Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Pardon? We have um six in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Moving on to the last resolution um by title only.
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, approving an order of the city of Michigan City Plan Commission, approving a certain statutory resolution adopted by the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission amending the boundaries of the East Side Economic Development Area and approving the amendment to economic development plan for the East Side Economic Development Area. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, co-sponsored by Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Simmons.
Are there any comments from the sponsors? All right, comments from the public? And I know we have some some uh people here um that can answer any questions um in reference to this resolution. So comments from the public? No comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Madam President?
Mm-hmm. Councilman Don?
Uh, yeah, uh. You know, I know we got this packet and I got exhibit eight dash two here, but I can't read anything on exhibit eight dash two because it's too blurry to even read a street name or anything else on it. So I don't even know what we're talking about here tonight. And I know, I don't think any of my other council members went through and read exhibit A one with all the parcels and everything else on it, but I don't even know what we're talking about here tonight.
Yeah.
And and what I'd like, what I'd like to do is make a motion to uh to table this until we can get maps that we can read and understand what we're talking about. If I make a motion to table?
We, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? All right, so there, the motion um does not move forward. Did we receive this electronically, Ms. Ms. Nyle?
Um, I did, but there's no street names or anything.
Okay. Um, we're at council comments. Are, can we have someone, representatives come up and uh explain? Yeah, that's one we got. Explain uh this this area um for this expansion. And this is our city planner, uh Skylar York.
Yeah, I'm the city, I'm I'm Skylar York. I'm your city planner and director of the redevelopment commission. Um, it was not provided in black and white. It was provided in color. Um. So I'm not sure what happened there. Um. This is the, this is the area that was annexed a couple of years ago. Um, and I guess I could give you kind of a description of it. Uh, it is between, believe that's Minkie. Well, Minkie doesn't go all the way through.
The airport, can you kind of give the general?
Yeah, general vicinity is it's the annexed area around the airport, near our cemetery. Uh, it's already part of the city. Uh. It it's, the airport's gonna be expanding across thirty-five there, so it's the uh, I think it was the old Ton and uh Ton and Blank property over there. Um, there's a very few parcel owners here. There's a, there are large swaths of parcels, big parcels. Uh, we've also rezoned this just recently in the last, I think, year to an M two designation for uh industrial use. Um, but yeah, this is the annexed area that's already part of the city. This is just an expansion of the East Side TIF into that air annexed area uh as part of the original fiscal plan and as a pre-plan or pre uh fiscal plan uh and pre-annexation agreement, we said that we would move forward with uh, once we were, and once they were annexed, we would uh move forward with the TIF process as well to bring them into the East Side TIF for um expansion of economic development, uh allow us to offer incentives to any type of industrial development that would come there or any type of uh economic expansion. I don't know if I handled that okay, but?
Any questions for um planning director uh Skylar York from the council?
Yeah, and Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. York, so what is, what is the need? Why do we have to have a uh enlarged TIF area? I know we annexed this area or tipped this area, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I think. This is when we, we had a TIF. We started a little TIF area and now we're expanding the TIF area in the side.
Correct.
Uh, now, the way I understand TIF, all the, all the tax money that's generated stays in those areas and doesn't go, right?
I think you just had an explanation from Randy about how that works.
Yeah.
So I'll let Randy explain again.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, Randy Rampola from Barnes and Thornburg with offices in South Bend. So the uh as it was explained to me, that the the rationale for tipping this expansion or this recently annexed area is that it would allow then any development that would come into the area um would essentially pay for whatever improvements are necessary to support that development. Right now, uh with the annexation, uh nothing much could happen there unless the city was going to use general fund money or other sources of funding to build whatever improvements would be necessary. So if you had, if it's, if it's annexed for manufacturing or industrial uses and you had a company that wants to locate there and they needed utilities or other road improvements, access, et cetera, the city would have to find a funding source. And so expanding the east side area into that area will allow TIF to be a funding source so that if you had that manufacturing plant that wants to come to the community, um the increment that would be generated by the increases in assessed value would be a a tool that the city could use to fund those improvements that would be required.
Okay, and then Randy, another question. So with the use of the TIF uh that in the tax monies stay in that area. Okay, so now when it comes time for funding for the fire department, police department, that do those taxes that are in that area go into the general fund to help support the police and the fire? I know we've had a seminar on this, but I'm just trying to refresh myself.
Sure, I mean, so to the extent there is available TIF revenue, um it is possible for the TIF to fund portions of costs of of uh of public safety firefighting. So, for example, if you needed to locate a fire station in that area or acquire a piece of apparatus to help provide fire support services out there, it might be possible then to the extent there is available TIF to use some of that TIF to fund a portion of that. Um, and and that's, that's become more common over the years across Indiana with you have, with the communities doing that.
Okay, so there is a fire station, I believe, located. I know it's on two twelve. I think two twelve is in this picture here. So if we wanted to buy a new fire truck, we could use TIF monies in that area to buy their new fire truck?
Uh, you would have to look at uh the service area for that, where that fire truck would be used and to the extent some portion of it of the service area overlaps with the TIF area, it would be possible. So if if thirty percent of the service area is in the TIF area and the truck is necessary to support the development in that TIF area, you could fund thirty percent of the cost of the truck then. And so that kind of analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any additional questions from the council or any additional comments from the council? Yes. You got something to add?
I was just gonna add that, you know, you do have the airport expansion going on out there. There might be special equipment for that. But also the the reason for expanding that the M two zoning there was because of the airport expansion and the opportunity to maybe have um businesses around that expansion that complement or complementary of that expansion. So it's really kind of a a playing off of that, that economic tool, if you will, of the airport.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Dahlia Jacobs?
Oh, yes. So like, because we annexed that land, you know, we don't want to pay for the infrastructure to go in out of city money. So this is the way to get that done and usable and taxable. And again, if we have people working there, you know, the income tax will be coming in. So I just think the, to use that property, you need to put it in the TIF so that there's funding in place to put in infrastructure, roads, et cetera.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Hearing none. Is there a motion or? What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion uh by Councilman uh Gene Simmons and
Support.
By Tracy Tillman and Brian Dabney.
I think she beat me here.
Uh, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don, President Volinsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, Ms. Nyle, and thank you, gentlemen, for uh answering our questions. Um, first uh ordinance by uh title only on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, annexing real estate approximately hundred forty-seven point two acres situated between Paz Road, Johnson Road and US Highway twenty, Lepore County, Indiana, declaring same to be part of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Yeah, no? You can just kind of talk about what you said in the, in the resolution. This is from earlier, um from the resolution that was presented earlier um in the evening that was passed. Um, any comments from the council?
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Nyle, add Ms. Ms. Jacobs as a co-sponsor?
I as well.
And Councilman Gene Simmons.
And then myself as well.
And Councilman Brian Dabney. Comments from the council? This will be held over for second reading. Ms. Nyle, the next uh resolution on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the common council, the general fund for additional funding for the common council's twenty twenty-two legal service contract. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Any comments from the council? Hearing none, this will be held over for second reading. Next ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax lit fund for twenty twenty-two landscaping contract. And this is introduced by Mr. Don, President Volinsky.
Yes, and comments from the sponsor?
Ah, yes, Mrs. Pres- Miss President. Uh, what I want to do is explain, first of all, the piece of property we're talking about, the amount of monies that we're talking about here. And I think, uh, because I'm not gonna get into the contract itself. I think, did everybody get a copy of the contract? Okay, all right, if you did, that's fine, yeah. But yeah, you know, I'm not gonna get into the pulling of the weeds and the fertilizer and all that kind of stuff. But I just want to tell you where this, how it came about and where we're going from there. So, first of all, the piece of property that we're talking about is the Greenway from Highway twelve on Wabash Street going south to Eleventh Street. It's both the uh Greenway in the middle of the street and the easements both on the west side and east side of the streets. And the, I guess you want to call them natural habitat rain gardens that were installed by the uh sanitary district uh to keep the water out of the uh sewer flow and them having to deal with it. It goes directly into the ground. But anyway, so this all started back in twenty fifteen is when the redevelopment commission redeveloped Wabash Street in the Greenway through there. And they took out a bond for three million, three hundred thousand dollars to do this work. Uh, it was refinanced in twenty twenty-one and now it's at, the bond is worth uh two million, well, it was refinanced at two million, seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. And redevelopment commission is still paying on this bond, uh which is now at two million, five hundred thousand. uh, which is now at two million, five hundred thousand, uh, to pay the bond. And the maturity date is twenty forty one. So we got a long ways to go, okay? We got nineteen years yet to pay off of this bond. But going back to the lawn area and the flowers, trees and Greenway, uh, so, uh, I had talked to the mayor. I had talked to Cranston Harris. I had talked to Sean Smith from the street department about, and I had even talked to the previous administration about that piece of property and how it's being maintained. And the city has never, by no fault of their own, but they just don't have the professional capability to take care of a Greenway area like that. Uh, they have vector control, vector control can do a good job of possibly cutting grass. But as far as maintaining something the way it should be maintained and the amount of money that was invested into this is not being kept up to what I call professional standards and standards that the city should have for itself. So I'm talking to the mayor, Cranston, Sean, had a meeting, decided, they decided that it would be a good thing for that, the city not to take care of it. But we have Service Gate take care of it and let them use their professionalism in taking care of that area. Vector control can then go and take care of weeds, grasses that are overgrowing on other properties throughout the city and maintaining neighborhoods in that regards. With that being said, then there's a grand total here of two hundred, three thousand dollars, two, two hundred, three, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty five cents. And that's for the total contract. But what we're looking for is, I think, a hundred thousand dollars to shore up that contract. Because here's the other areas that Service Gate takes care of and what this contract includes. Franklin Square, seventy thousand, eighteen dollars and thirty five cents. From Eleventh Street to Cool Spring Ave, Service Gate will be taking care of that, taking care of that. Well, they actually do take care of the flower beds, but now this year they're gonna take over the, uh, grass cutting on that area. So that's seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty four dollars and twenty cents. And then Wabash Street, it'll be from US twelve to eleven. That'll be an additional sixty three thousand, twenty nine dollars and eighty cents for a total of two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and thirty five cents. Uh, it'll be done professionally. It'll be done like it should be done because in my estimation, you know, it's Wabash Street, Franklin Street, Franklin Square, Michigan Boulevard should all be taken care of and look beautiful all the time for visitors that come into our city. Those are the main thoroughfares and for the citizens that live here. And today Skylar York told me that over a half a million people a year come into Lighthouse Place. And what do they see when they go into Lighthouse Place? The first thing they see is the Wabash Street, Greenway and thoroughfare. So that's the basis of the ask here and the, uh, ordinance for a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Councilman Don Preswalinski, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Yes, Mayor, period.
Thank you, Madam President, Duane Perry, Michigan City Mayor. I, I will ask that you approve this, there are several reasons for this. We have, uh, a difficult time with the last couple of years that we've gone through keeping people. We've had a lot of vector control people quit, uh, which has put a burden on us. A lot of the underground piping for the irrigation system, for the planners and such, is in disrepair, it's not connected, it doesn't work. So we looked at this and we broke the work up, putting some of the onus for watering on our own sanitary district. Our vector control person left. So we, we do have difficulty maintaining this. It's not a, a, an issue of negligence, it's an issue of absence of horsepower to get this taken care of. So considering that, I hope you, you will approve this, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Yes, state your name and address.
Thank you, uh, Bruce DiMedici, I live at six nineteen Hobart. I will be soon, soon as I stop running for my friend Brett in the back row. Um, and I just wanted to offer perspective of fairly recent, um, resident of Michigan City. And, and up until today, I, I frankly was confused exactly what was supposed to be the, the nature of this part of the land. Because when I drive to and from the mall, it, it didn't look to me like it was particularly well-maintained. And I, I found it sort of visually confusing. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that there's some effort made to, to clear it up. And I, and I think I reinforce, uh, what's already been said that when my fellow, um, friends from Chicago come here, that this will make a difference to them, how well that's maintained. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any additional public comments? Hearing none, uh, comments from the pu- uh, from the council? Uh, yes, Councilman, uh, Gene Simmons.
I concur on that. It's an eyesore. It's been an eyesore for several years now. Uncapped, even when the city guys were clay, uh, doing the upkeep, was on a very good job. And again, you got six million people coming to the mall annually. Doesn't look good. So I wholeheartedly agree that we should have someone, uh, that are more professional through the upkeep.
Thank you. Councilman Tracy Tillman and Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus.
If I could, thank you, Madam President. Um, Councilman, uh, Preswalinski, would you be able to provide me or the council with those figures that you just stated? This is definitely something that is needed. Um, I was just wondering, because we have contracted with, um, with, uh, Serv- Service Gate, um, in the past, would this, the amount that you indicated for Service Gate, has that increased? Or would you know if what we were paying under our prior contract with them?
Uh, Councilwoman Tillman, I, I didn't, I wouldn't know if it, uh, increased or not, uh, over, over the past couple of years. I don't, I don't know. I, I would have to get with, uh, you know, Cranston Harris. He may be able to give me that information or I talked to, uh, Yvonne.
I have a contract.
Okay, could you provide that, please?
Yeah, yes, um, while, since Controller Hoffmaster is online and has her hand up, can you answer any of those questions?
Um, uh, yes, I, yes, I can. Um, good evening, this is Yvonne Hoffmaster, City Controller. This, this contract has basically doubled because of the additional services. Um, the contract that we had in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one was roughly ninety nine thousand dollars. So, um, this contract, like, is now a little over two hundred thousand dollars. But the extent of their work has increased dramatically to, to help bring, um, these areas back looking to the way they should be looking. And as the mayor had stated, not having, um, the manpower to even, um, mow the grass properly, yeah, um, has, has created issues throughout the city. So that's why it was decided we will, we will let Service Gate now take over all of the maintenance of these areas from, um, on Wabash from Highway twelve to Eleventh Street and then Franklin Street from the library all the way south to Cool Spring Ave.
Thank you, is that, you have any, anything additional? Um, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, before I go to Councilwoman Ziegus?
Um, just one other question, and that is, so with this, uh, designated areas that has been listed, that they will cover, um, just so that I understand, but they will not service, um, Michigan Boulevard?
Not in what you should.
Okay, Michigan Boulevard is a separate contract.
And that contract?
Is, is covered by the sanitary district.
And I'm, I'm asking, and I'm only asking because I know that I, I've seen Service Gate service Michigan Boulevard.
Through the sanitary district.
Correct, okay, yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Controller Hoffmaster, um, Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus.
Uh, yes, so he, I have a little bit of a, a concern here because originally when these were put in, these were rain gardens and they did need professional maintenance because they had na- native plantings. And their purpose was to slow down the water and to use not as much stormwater management. Uh, when I see this list of herbicide, herbicide roundup and more herbicide, that is really kind of counter what the whole idea of the installation was. Granted, it doesn't look good because professional people were not maintaining it. But I would ask that we either discuss this with the Sustainability Commission or go to a native plant, person like Cardno or some other, you know, organization like that, they're, they're not that far away, to take a look at how we could have managed those native plants. Because native plants take a few years to look good. If you take care of them, we did not. And so now you can't treat this like a regular lawn and put fertilizer and lawn here. You have to kind of take care of the planting because that was the whole cost of the project is to do the what, the mitigation. So if I would ask by the next meeting, if we can get some more information about not using this much pesticide, not using this much herbicide and not making it look like a golf course. But yes, improving how it looks because, and then we could be proud of the environmental impact of our garden instead of just pouring more chemicals on the grass because, you know, we like it to look nice. So that's my two cents.
Yep, yes, um, Councilman.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, to, to that concern. Uh, I, I believe that, and, and I call, uh, Service Gate and talk to them about that. But the herbicides and pesticides that they're using, they're not gonna be, those will not go by the rain gardens. Those are just for weed control, uh, around trees, perhaps, sidewalks and that type of thing. Yeah, they're not planning on using that down in the rain gardens because they already know that the rain gardens are, you know, special areas and, and, and not to do that. And let me just, uh, on, on another point is, you know, to let the public know, you see, here's what, here's what happens. And, and I'm not talking bad, but this is just state law. Is that when, when you're dealing with the redevelopment commission and the redevelopment commission says, hey, we're gonna do that project over there, all they have to do is maintain that project for one year. After that, it automatically goes to the city. So, you know, that's fine to, to do something, but you know what? Give us the money to pay for the manpower to take care of it. And that never happens. So we just get, the responsibility comes on us to take care of it. And that's basically what's, what's happened here. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? Uh, the only thing I would state is that, um, this maybe can confirm, uh, you know, that they're not gonna be using any of that with the rain gardens before the next council meeting. And we have five weeks in this month, so that might be helpful. Give them a little time.
Ask for a five-minute.
Okay, yes, so we will, so this will be held over for second reading. And, uh, we have, um, a request for a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess and then we'll wrap up. So we'll be back at eight o'clock, six minutes. It is eight o'clock. Thank you for, um, entertain, entertaining our six-minute break. And we will now move on to the next item on our agenda on first reading, um, by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax. Wait a minute, I'm on the wrong page.
No, uh, you're, it's the next, it's the one.
Yeah, it's, right, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax lit fund to provide funding for, for professional services to prepare a physical plan for a voluntary annexation petition filed by Prince Family LLC, E T A L, introduced by Bryant Dabney.
Right, does the sponsor have any comments?
Not at this time, I have plenty of chance on readings two and three.
All right, thank you. Um, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, any comments from the council? All right, this will be held over for a second reading. Next ordinance, um, by title only on third reading, um, Ms. Nyle.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local road and street fund for the balance of the twenty twenty one miscellaneous paving project. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
All right, um, are there any comments from the public? I will state that, uh, formal change dates, our, uh, dispatch, February sixteen, twenty twenty two, and we had the fu- uh, formal public hearing was held on March first, twenty twenty two. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion, um, from Councilman Don Preswalinski.
Second.
And second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Ziegus?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to our last ordinance, um, by title only on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section two dash four six two of the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding membership of the Youth Leadership Commission. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Gene Simmons and a second from Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyle up on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, so new business, FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Sustainability Commission expiring on May first, twenty twenty two. The incumbent is Ms. Nancy Moldenhour, so, um, we will, uh, do nominations at the first council meeting in April. With unfinished business, we now have our vote for the common council for the appointment to the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation. Um, the term expires March thirty first, twenty twenty two. The incumbent was Ms. Connie Anderson, and we have one, two, three, four, five. So we have five, um, not, people who were nominated. Mr. Antoine Burks, Ms. Kimberly Williams, Mr. Rodney McCormick, Mr. Michael Vincent and Ms. Stacy Benning. Um, and, um, I think we have some folks here with us who may want to speak, uh, before we move to a vote. But let me explain, um, for this vote, what we will do, it, it will be in rounds. So if there is a successful candidate that has a majority of the votes in the first round, that person will, uh, retain that seat. If not, if whoever has the most votes in the first round will move on, but we will have to do a second round to get to the second person, I believe. And we'll see how that goes, but it depends on what the numbers look like. So with that, without that, um, with that being said, um, is there anyone who's been nominated who would like to speak?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. I'm gonna take my name down. Um, my involvement with Martin Luther King Center on a non-for-profit agency, I think it'd be, uh, inappropriate, I think it might be some conflict of interest for me to move forward with this. Um, and I hope, uh, whoever you guys nominate tonight will be someone who's not affiliated with a non-for-profit. And I hope that you guys give my, I give my. affiliated with a non-for-profit. And I hope that you guys give my, I give my support to Stacy Benning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Uh, Mr. Vincent or Ms. Benning, would you like to say anything? Disaffirming. All right.
Seize the opportunity. My name is Stacy Benning. Um, for those that don't know me, I reside at thirty eight oh five Lexington Road, Michigan City, Indiana. Um, I have uh, just a little bit about me. I've lived in Michigan City all of my life. Um, except for when I went to college, I went to Indiana University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Came back to Michigan City, um, uh, worked in government for most of my career, over thirty years. I worked in state government for approximately seven years. Um, been working for the county for over twenty-six years. Um, I'm an officer of the court and county government. Um, and that capa- in those capacities, I have worked with various different agencies, different organizations, several not-for-profit organizations. So I'm familiar with different individuals, uh, different families, um, just uh, many people, just the whole gamut of uh, different organizations and um, agencies in the community in Michigan City. Um, with that being said, I think that um, I will be a great asset for the enrichment work. I think that I would bring a new, fresh perspective, objective perspective to the organization. So with that, I ask for your support. Uh, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vincent. And Caleb, do we have anybody online? Okay.
Hi, Michael Vincent, six Devonshire Court. Would you like to remove my name from nomination and I'll put my support towards Stacy? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so um, we will now uh, move to the vote. So just state um, state who you um, will support in this first round. And and so you can go to the roll call, Ms. Nyler.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh, Ms. Benny.
Mr. Mack.
Kimberly Williams.
Ms. Deitch.
Ms. Benny.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Uh, Stacy Benning.
Mr. Simmons.
Stacy Benning.
Ms. Ziegus.
Kim Wood Williams.
And Ms. Tillman.
Ms. Benny.
I still didn't hear.
Brad, you got it. Kimberly Williams.
Oh, sorry. Okay, and Ms. Tillman.
Ms. Benny.
Okay, we have five for Ms. Bennings and three for uh, Kimberly.
All right, congratulations, Ms. Benny. All right, moving on to uh, the social status of African-American males. Um, I did reach out to the NAACP. And we did receive a notification and a a recommendation uh, from the NAACP for Ms. Linda Fay Conley. Uh, they confirmed and sent us a letter. So I would like to have a vote on um, Ms. Conley. So we need a uh, it it is an appointment from them, but it is our appointment. So we do need a motion and a second for Ms. Linda Fay Conley.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept Ms. Linda Fay Conley.
All right, we have a a motion, we need a second.
Support.
And we have a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, and this will be in replacement of Ms. Latanya Troutman. Ms. Nyler up on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Ziegus.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. I have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And and I know that there's some, uh, there's a meeting, it was, the date was changed um, for the social studies to address um, the the other two positions and any changes that need to be amended to the uh, ordinance. All right, are there any comments from the public? State your name and address.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I wish I was here when you were talking about the public safety income tax. Um, it seems like this was done because of a promise that was made by a mayor over in La Porte. And then they bring it over here and want us to support what they're doing over there. I think it's wrong. I think the taxpayers here have given a, has given a lot. We given a lot and and in return, we don't get nothing. Um, the crime rate is high, services are bad. And some areas we are improving, some areas we're not. It's disheartening all over, all because a person made a promise. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be falling in the into that at all. But I hope some of that money is earmarked for programs, like you said, Mr. Prespolinski, Ms. Madam President, because it's always BS involved. And when it comes down to this, um, I wanted to to do body cam. We can't even get body cam prices lower. You want me to get my shirt off my back, but you won't even give me one sock. It's not fair. And it needs to change. Um, on another note, from the social status, um, we supposed to give an annual report. Um, unfortunately, we don't have all our members together yet, but we've been needing. It's a couple of things you guys can do to help us out. And our fiscal year starts um, the first of the year ends the last day of December. All nominations need to be done hopefully in December. So we can go right in because we have an election soon as we come in, right then and there. And then the um, the attendance rating, the attendance, that needs to be addressed. I wanted to say I just, it's just, it's some of the the prior administration or horde, a lot of them never showed up. And we always have a lot of problem with NAACP also. And keep in mind, NAACP almost do the exact same thing the social status does. Um, NAACP is more towards geared towards politics now than than helping than helping the African-American community. And sadly, that's what it is right now. So keeping that in mind, um, it would be nice if we have any more hiccups with the NAACP that we think about moving them, removing them off the list of nominating people. Because I I, it's other groups out here that would love to be on that, on that board. Um, we gotta do better than what we're doing. And we are moving in the right direction, and I just want to thank you guys. Outgoing.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Yes, Mr.
Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Gladys Street, Michigan City. I just want to say your vote for Stacy Benning was right on. I've known her since she was a wee little one. I worked with her father for twenty-two years. And I've known her s- ever since then. She's, she's a wonderful young lady, and she'll be good for the I I need to apologize to all of you for the meeting you had, and I got a little over, overboard, but I'm sorry.
No need to apologize, Mr. Hallahan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, name and address.
Uh, Bretton Tisdale, three oh one Prior Row. Uh, I just have a couple uh, questions. Um, Mr. Prespolinski, the uh,
Well, let me state this for for the record. Um, you you can ask your questions, um, and if we address them, it'd be in public comment.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would say that you would uh, send them an email, but you can state them for the record.
Okay, um, for the the greenways that we're talking about being um, manicured and taken care of with the Service Gate, I think it should be looked at as, is the the amount that's coming up on the contract, is that to get everything back in order? And then the amount goes down to maintain the, what's in the contract? Or is that amount that Ms. Hoffmaster was talking about in perpetuity? Because she said it would, it doubled because the amount of work went up. So if it gets back to what it was, does the amount go down to just maintain? And I think that's something that needs to be looked at, or is it just going to stay at the two hundred thousand dollar mark? And just forever.
That's a great question. All right, go ahead.
I'll answer, I'll answer that question. Yeah, that's that's a uh, a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Uh, but it's it's, yeah, it's to get the Wabash Street Greenway back in the shape, okay? And and it's not that it's in deter- you know, deteriorated, dilapidated condition. It just needs a little TLC, get things back in line, and then keep it that way, okay? Uh, so you have that cost. Then what what else they're doing this year is Service Gate is picking up the lawn care from Eleventh Street to Cool Spring Ave. So that there is an increase in the cost. So the work that's going to be done on Wabash Street, once everything is put back in order, it's not that it's going to be decreased any, it's just that these costs, now there's a cost on Wabash Street. Now there's an increased cost on Franklin Street. You add that together, and that's where we're coming up with the increase in the cost. But none of it will go back down throughout the uh, throughout the summer. No, once they, you know, we get this contract for two hundred and three, you know, two hundred and three thousand dollars, it'll stay at that, that rate. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, also, the, there's been a lot of talk about the TIF districts and and I'm not, you know, pardon my ignorance on how they work and everything. But I understand, like, Meyer and Menards, that whole area, Dunes Plaza, Southwind, everything is in the South TIF. But if you look down there, you look at the roads, especially Town Center Drive that runs right in front of Meyer Menards. You go down back through Southwind over by the old Adams Park and look at the the roads and everything that and how everything's taken care of. When we're talking about these tips and if if all the taxes are supposed to stay in and take care of those areas, if that's a representation of how the tips work, maybe we need to start looking at something else.
And and I can answer some of that on Meyer Drive. So, um, we didn't own, some of those roads, we don't own, and we're in the process of acquiring. Uh, so that's been a process and and there is a project underway for all of those streets right now as we speak in. Um, Hassan Association has been handling that for us. They did a, an update at our redevelopment commission yesterday, but don't know record wise what happened, but we didn't own those streets, um, some of those right of ways. And that was part of the issue is that it was owned by one of those um, big boxes. And they were responsible for it. So now we're in the process of, process of taking care of those.
Okay, and that's a, and that's understandable, you know, but also looking across Franklin. You know, again, looking at Southwind, Adams Park, all that areas hasn't been maintained outside of the new stuff that went in Ohio. And I'm assuming that's more for the, the hospital than anything. Um, so again, if we can't control that, or we're adding more TIF districts, that the money's not coming back into our city, but staying in a generalized area, then how do we move forward from there? You know, and I think that's just something that we're, these are things that are going to be pushed forward that have to be held accountable so that if the money's there working, that's fine, but if it's not, then let's get the money back into town.
Yeah, and I'll take that back to the redevelopment commission as well. And Mr. Fitzpatrick, follow on.
Uh, just real quick on uh, the the part on the south side, uh, the Southwind area and all of those roads. So there was a major infrastructure uh, project that took place when that Ohio Street did. Uh, in addition to paving the road, they did a lot of uh, stormwater re reconstruction of the drainage and stuff behind Crestwood and uh, a lot of those roads that had been flooding really badly for, you know, I don't know how long because of the old drainage system weren't uh, maintained. And uh, part of the funds that were left part of that project, they they were able to do Village Road and Crestwood. It's just the funding wasn't there to complete it all at one time. So those uh, additional roads, Southwind and all that, they're still on the the list, and they're going by the pace of running as far as when they get done with uh, whether it be TIF districts or TIF funds, or if the city has to do it, it's just at the, at the pace that uh, we're getting them done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the public? Anybody online? No? All right, comments from the council? Comments from the council? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, it's in my face. Um, Councilwoman Dalia Ziegus.
Okay, uh, I just got a message from uh, the Assistant Superintendent for Parks and Recreation. Uh, the city kids day camp is back. They are hiring instructors. They'd like to have someone, well, they have to be over sixteen. They'd like to have college kids. And here's a little uh, little explanation. Do you enjoy working with kids? Michigan City Park Department is taking applications for staff for the two thousand twenty-two city kids day camp program. Campus for children ages six to eleven years old is held in Lake Hills Elementary School. Camp will run from June sixth to July twenty-ninth from eight to three. Staff will begin working the last week of May. Director pay is sixteen dollars an hour, supervisor pay is fifteen dollars an hour, camp leader pay is fourteen dollars an hour. So if if you or anyone that you know is interested, applications are available in the personnel office at City Hall. You can also check e-michigancity.com.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, Tracy Tillman.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, Councilwoman Ziegus, could you tell me, is that camp, did it indicate if that's the cost or is that free to the public?
I don't believe it's free, but I think it's a reasonable cost. I think you can just uh, go to Shannon Eason from the Assistant Superintendent of Parks and and inquire.
Thank you.
It's a very good camp. Like, they they skipped it last year. They didn't have instruct, whatever. It was just
My kids. Any additional question, uh, comments, Councilwoman Tillman? Oh, Council, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Uh, yeah, uh, not necessarily a comment. I just had a c- uh, question um, in regards to the new uh, projects or whatever that'll be handled by Service Gate. Are those projects, were they sent out for bid or uh, were they just given to Service Gate? I I want to know who, was it uh, the Board of Works or was it just a, an appointed contract? I don't know if there's something that could be asked in an email or something.
Yeah, I can, I can answer, I can answer that right now. Uh, that was just a uh, a contract that was given to Service Gate since they worked on uh, you know, the other areas in town. Uh, they went, well, I guess the city has tried before to get bids from landscaping companies and nobody wants to bid on for whatever particular reason. You know, whether their lack of people, of workers, or what have you, yeah. Yeah, but that's the way this contract is set up, was set up. Councilman, yeah.
Thank you. Um, Councilman, Brian Dabney.
Real quick, um, we've been having discussions, and the city has been having discussions because everybody has seen um, the the gun violence and that, that's plaguing our city. And um, over the weekend, I I had a conversation, I was talking to John Lake and uh, the prosecuting attorney, county prosecuting attorney. And we were talking about some of the the things that we should be looking at in terms of possibly even with ARP funds that were, we we have, we still have thirteen million dollars or so. And he brought up, without me bringing it up, he talked about cameras throughout the city. Uh, we talked about, and I had mentioned before, and um, Mr. Mack as well, and and we were talking about possibly the ring doorbell, uh, 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 systems that we've seen. Uh, we've done some research and saw that some cities actually subsidize putting the ring doorbell or getting ring doorbells uh, where you can see the camera out in front of the home. And so when people sign up for that and they're subsidized being input by the city, um, if something were to happen in front of, let's just say, I got one of these systems put in my home free, something happens in front of my house, the police can come to your, to your house and say, hey, we need to see the camera between two o'clock and two thirty. So they can see some of the things that are happening out there on the streets. Uh, so we had a little bit of discussion about that. Uh, we talked about the license plate readers. This was brought to us before with Chief Swistake. Um, and he actually presented that he would want to mount these on the front of the police cars at the time. That's how it was brought to us. And immediately there was pushback from the council because we started to think, well, you can take these vehicles and park them in certain areas. So you could target certain so you could target certain areas. And I wasn't really thinking on my feet that night, but I started to think about that and said, well, why can't we have where we do that and put these camera, I mean, these license plate readers on the entrance and exits to the city, along Franklin, along the Boulevard, and other places like that, uh, so you're not targeting certain areas, but these license plate readers are around the town, so you can see, you know, what's, what's going on there. So I'll be in touch with him, to talk to him, but we, we, we talked about some of these, these things, and hopefully, hopefully, we can come together, because I really think public safety is going to be one of the biggest issues. We see all of the projects, bringing new people here to Michigan City. They want to be safe, first and foremost, and so I think there's time for us to really do some concrete things, uh, to increase our safety here in Michigan City, because obviously, we're not getting any help from the State House, you know, they're trying to pass gun laws. I think that was Councilman Don Presmelinsky that mentioned that, where they're passing gun laws, where you don't even have to have a permit, like, to carry guns anymore. So we have to find ways to protect, to protect Michigan City. So I believe that there are some things that we can really do, and then also, there's a, a technology out there called Shot Spotter, we've looked into as well, where there are sound, I, I mean, I don't know if to call them on, on top of telephone poles, whatever it may be, detectors, thank you, and if a gunshot goes off, these things will alert the police department where those gunshots came from. So if there's a unit in the area, they can respond quicker. I think we, as a council, and, you know, should be starting to look at, at things like that to help increase public safety. I'm just trying to think of ways, because we've had many discussions where we've met and talked, met and talked, met and talked, but we have not come up with any concrete things that I believe we can put in the city to help with health and safety, I mean, public safety. So, you know, we talked about increasing officers and things of that sort, uh, through the LIT tax, some of that money could be used for that, but these are other tools, I believe, can help the police do their job more effectively. So I'm sure we're going to have conversations coming along with that, uh, because I'm going to continue to bring them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Councilman Don Presmelinsky.
That's a few comments here. Number one, being on the human, being the liaison for the Human Rights Commission, I have to bring up that the Naomi Anderson celebration is going to be taking place Saturday at West God Park at two PM in the afternoon, and this group has done an outstanding job and a lot of work for a couple of years, and if you go past West God Park now, you can see the large steel figures artwork that's out there now, and appreciate everybody to stop by for the ceremony, and they're supposed to have a, let's say, unveiling party afterwards at the Lebesin Center. Also, with the Human Rights Commission and all the council members got a copy of it, but they're going to have a, this is for the public, a Galveston Steakhouse, and this is easy data remember, is March thirty-first, the last day of the month, they're going to have a give back from four to eight PM. So a certain percentage of your bill goes to the Human Rights Commission, so doing my duty for that group. And Ernie, I just want to tell you, I know you got up here and you apologized for the comments that you made at one of the meetings we had here for the, for the LIT tax, but I guarantee you, whatever you said did not offend Councilman Don Presmelinsky, nor did you take up too much time. I just appreciate you coming out and expressing your opinion on the whole subject matter, okay? Because I know we had those two meetings for the general public to come out and express their opinion, not very many people showed up, but I appreciate you showing up, okay? Just two more items. I want to thank the Main Street Association and John Stimley for putting on the St. Patrick's Day Parade last Saturday, as usual, fantastic job, and I want to thank the Michigan City Street Department for picking up all the trash, debris, whatever you want to call it, filth and dirt, along Myers Road, along Paz Road, along four hundred north in preparation for the regional basketball tournament, and then low and behold, they do all this work on Thursday, and then Friday it snowed two inches, so it covered everything, covered everything up anyway, but anyway, I appreciate those guys for, for doing that, and then I just want to give a shout out to a couple of my good friends, Tim and Kathy Glidden, they took the time out and volunteered and picked up all the garbage along Cleveland Ave, all the way down to four hundred north, and I think they filled up like eight or nine thirty-two gallon garbage bags, and, yeah, they took the time to do that, so appreciate that very much. That is it.
Any additional comments from the council? Well, I have a couple. Again, Naomi Anderson, two o'clock, some of her descendants, great-great-grandchildren will be there, but at the reception also, there'll be a small program at the Lebesin Center afterwards with food, and several, you know, our community members that are a part of that committee will have Ming Washington doing some poetry and Carnes and Carnes as well, so, you know, come out and show your support. Also, our next council meeting is on April fifth. I will be at a Smart Cities Conference, so I've notified Councilman Don Presmelinsky that I won't be in attendance physically, but I'll be on Zoom, so he'll be handling the meeting at the next meeting, so I will call for a motion for adjournment. All right, thank you. Everybody have a good evening.